To the April 3rd Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting, I ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of which it stands: One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please be seated. Oh, sorry Claudia, I forgot to ask you for any.
Always ready. It's me, it's not.
Always somebody. All right, no meeting, no minutes to accept. First item on the irregular agenda, Woodbury Commons Phase Five Review Revised Submission of Draft Environmental Impact Statement for Completeness in accordance with adopted scoping document as required under the State Environmental Quality Review Act associated with proposal to extend Woodbury Common including construction of a hotel, development of second parking garage, infilling construction of 159,249 square feet of additional retail spaces. The property contains 149.2 plus or minus acres and known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps to Section 225 Block 1 Lot 70.2 and Section 226 Block 1 Lot 1. Good evening.
It's up here.
Yeah, see the bottom.
Down, down, down.
There's like a little black rectangle.
Yeah, push and hold.
Help is on the way.
Support! She's like, "We never hear Kelly."
I always try and give it away.
Testing.
Thanks Jeff. Good evening Chairman and members of the planning board, Jennifer Canaric from Price Meach, Sholman and D'Armonia on behalf of the applicant, Simon Property Group for the Woodbury Commons Premium Outlet Phase Five Project. Where we stood last when we appeared before the board was this month, no it was March, to provide an additional red line DSEIS to your board professionals for their further review and comment. We subsequently were able to get that in on March 22nd, were able to get it in in time to appear this evening. Since then, we also received March 28th, 2024 Board Engineers Review with just a few other minor comments relative to the submission from March 22nd. We did provide comments as of this afternoon, we were able to turn around red line responses. I know Kelly was sent in as well as the Board Engineer correct. Fred Munt from PSNS submitted that and that's basically where we stand on completeness.
So if I could, I think with, I think the memos that you've received, let me start over. The red line that you received was responsive to those comments that you still had remaining from H2M and Capital. And just so you know, I did just receive an email from Capital saying that they reviewed the response letter in the red line DEIS provided on March 20th from PSNS and that all of their comments have been satisfied at this time. So I think the red line that's being referenced right now are for those minor comments that were remaining outstanding, that could be, it could be adopted to subject to confirmation that those changes are being made. But I don't want to take anything away from Sean if he wants to add to that.
Yeah, I didn't see the, yeah, I don't know.
Time might have been away.
Yeah, well, this one. Yes, so I didn't see the red line version yet, but we did have a few minor comments outstanding, but we felt that the DEIS was adequate, subject to those changes. So if you'd like, I can go through those if, I know the applicant already saw our memo, but it's up to you, board.
I think we all saw the memo, right? Can you, can you read it line by line first?
Certainly.
Any questions for the applicant or consultants? Phil, I know Phil, you're good, right?
Yes.
All right, so, all right, so with that, I'm going to make two motions. Once, I'm going to offer a motion to schedule a special meeting for June 5th. Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm also going to offer a motion, actually, three motions.
Okay. You were about to, you were about to adopt it subject to confirmation of those changes, right? Okay.
And then schedule the public hearing for June 5th. I heard, I picked up what you were putting down.
Just making sure.
That's why I said three. All right, so then I'll offer a second motion to adopt the DEIS provided by the Commons with the red line, subject to the red line conditions that have been provided by consultants.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And then I will offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for June 5th for the DEIS.
It'll be a public hearing on all elements of the project, so special permits, site plan subdivision, whatever's involved, it'll be on that.
Still seconding?
I don't know about that now.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
See you on the 5th.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everybody.
And we'll coordinate with you for publications and distribution.
Absolutely. Everyone's very interested in the area.
Okay, great, thanks.
Next item on the agenda Avalon Hotel, public scoping session for proposed 130-room hotel involving two parcels of land containing approximately 5.2 plus or minus acres known as a section, it's known as Section 226 Block 1 Lot 5 and 6.2 on the Village Tax Maps. The properties are located in the limited commercial and within the hotel overlay district. The planning board has declared this as a type one action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and has required that the applicant prepare an environmental impact statement to address potential environmental impacts of the project. Involved interested agencies, residents and other members of the public are invited to participate in the input scoping document. Good evening.
Would you like us to just do a brief?
Just a quick, brief introduction.
All right, good evening. Kristia Donna Silverberg Zalantis. We also have Dave Higgins from Lang and Telly, the engineers, and Paul Olivera for the applicant. I was remiss that I didn't mention this last time, but we appreciate the board scheduling the meeting for this evening in order to hold this scoping session and we look forward to hearing from any of the members of the public that are here. We did receive from your attorney a red line of the scoping document incorporating your consultants' comments and edits. Overall, we, we are in favor of what's in there. We have a few questions and clarifications, but we, if, if the board is okay with that, we could put that off until we hear from anyone in the public. We also received the correspondence that you received from the Orange County Planning Department with their comments on the, on the scoping document. And just for anyone in the public, this is a proposed four-story 130-unit hotel and we are going to be merging two lots on Turner Road with access to Route 32. We're going to be providing shuttle service and we can talk a little bit more about the hotel. It's going to be, it's not going to be a full-service hotel. We'll have some food, but mostly it's just intended to cater to the, to people visiting with, to go to the comments. So with that, I'll open it, I'll leave.
Does anybody have anything for the applicant? Cool. Sure.
Do you want to open it to the public and then we can go?
Open it to the public and then we'll take care of it.
Yeah, then we'll go over the comments.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go out to the public, anybody wishing to provide input on the scoping session for the Avalon Hotel? Second call, anybody wishing to provide input on the Avalon Hotel scoping session?
Oh, oh. Awesome. What's your name for the record?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could not spell that for you.
Yeah, just come up and spell.
I'm like a comment, somebody write it down.
Millan, M-I-L-A-N. It's my first name.
The microphone.
Last name is G-O-S-W-A-M-I. Resident of Central Valley, working with, friends with acquaintances with Paul and the team, excited to see the project move forward. No other comments?
Thank you for your feedback. Third and final call for the public scoping session input for the Avalon Hotel. Written comments received, nobody else from the public has risen to speak, I will offer a motion to close the public scoping session. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So where we last, last left this, I took the consultant comments that we received from all of your consultants and I incorporated them and from the board members, I incorporated them into a red line document. I do know that there are some items that the applicant would like to talk about today and I don't know if anybody, when they did review it, had any additional comments. I was trying to put, everybody's in there as best that I could, but I know that there's going to be some tweaks, so what I'd like to do is go over those tonight and make whatever changes the board wants so that we can adopt it and they can go on their merry way and start studying.
All right, so I had like three small ones. For interested agency adding the New York State Police. Under wastewater managed, stormwater management, sorry, being Woodbury is designated a climate smart community, I'd like to see them use, look into the potential using of rain gardens to manage at least some of the stormwater on the project. And then under utilities.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
What's that?
Hold on.
Sorry.
So that would be under?
Stormwater.
Sea, surface water and stormwater under proposed mitigations.
I didn't know I had it going.
No, no, I'm just trying to, I just want to put it in so that, given that.
So C1.
I can say. Say that again? In the mitigation measures.
Okay.
All right, right now, I'm just going to put it in capital letters so that I fix it, but it'll basically be, take a look at rain gardens here as a potential mitigation measure.
I lost my little flagging note for utilities. Hold on. I know it's a comment, I'm just trying to find the right.
How about this shall include a discussion of the potential use of rain gardens. Of rain gardens as a mitigation measure. Great, Kelly, thanks. Just kidding. I'm clearly very tired.
Have I completely lost my mind? Was there not a utility section? I don't, yeah, there may not be, okay.
Oh, yeah, I don't think on this one it was under, I think it was under, there's water supply and then.
So again, going with the fact that Woodbury has been designated a climate smart community and we are supposed to take environmental considerations and, you know, environmentally friendly things into consideration when looking at projects, the use of, potentially using solar to power part, if not all of the project.
Power, okay, hold on. Community service.
Ah, maybe that's where it is.
So that's page 15 to 16, so then under proposed mitigation, I'll say this shall include a discussion of the potential use of solar panels slash solar energy. Or as a way to?
Reduce dependency or strain on the grid.
Did anybody on the board have any others? Do you want to go over yours?
If, if board and the consultants don't mind, I'll just run through them very quickly. Again, we appreciate your time in discussing these items. So the first was in Section 3C1, requiring a judicial, jurisdictional, excuse me, determination from the Army Corps of Engineers and DEC to be provided as attachments to the DEIS if necessary. We weren't sure what if necessary meant and under what circumstances this would be necessary. We've already delineated the wetlands on the site plan, we've acknowledged Army Corps of Engineers and the DEC as involved agencies and so we're willing to concede to their jurisdiction to the, to the extent it applies. So we're, we're just concerned that if we have to go through that process as part of the DEIS, it might otherwise hold up what, what would be a complete submission.
So I guess, I just had a question for the applicant. Has the DEC been out to the site and how, or have they approved that wetland delineation yet?
I believe they have, yes.
Okay. So that does change things, because if, if the delineation's been approved, then my point on coordination.
Well, then I think the DEC has said that that's okay. I mean typically we put if necessary, if one of them comes out and is like they want to take jurisdiction or they don't, and the if necessary was if they say, oh, well, great, send me that email and.
Our, yeah, our concern is that the jurisdictional determination is typically the letter that's provided by the US Army Corps of Engineers that has to do with their jurisdiction over the wetlands. And typically that's done separately from their review for permitting. So like if someone wanted to know just where the wetlands on the property are, they would seek a jurisdictional determination because they're not seeking a permit for disturbance. In this case, we do need permitting from the Army Corps. So if we're required to provide JD on top of that, that's going to, you know, could potentially extend the timeout significantly because the Army Corps generally doesn't want to provide JDs in instances where they have to provide permits. So that's, we're just hoping to have, not have the JD as part of the process because we need to go get the permit.
Yeah, and I think the intent, I think the intent here is by making sure that we're aware of the jurisdiction under both of those wetland areas, that the DEIS can accurately reflect either wetland disturbance or in the case of the DEC wetlands, disturbance in the wetland buffer. So as, you know, Attorney Don pointed out, if you can provide that verification that the, the DEC has reviewed that and then accurately discuss in the DEIS what impacts are occurring in the buffer area as the DEC does have 100-foot buffer, I think that would be appropriate.
So we could move forward with that condition?
Yeah, I'm just thinking of potential river. You've had it by the FAIS though.
The what? The permit?
The JD if we need one.
Yeah, if the Army Corps decides that we need one as part of the permit, then we'd have to go out and get it. Typically, they don't require that as part of the permit. The JD has sort of been separated out just for purposes of.
And just doing weird things like these.
Is there?
I just understand they don't really want to be doing JDs because Brian Rosell is really covering the whole East Coast and he'd rather be dealing with permits.
Instead of like a, yeah. Instead of a formal written, instead of the jurisdictional determination, is there a way that we could get something in writing from the Army Corps of Engineers saying, you know, that they understand this to be the boundary for that wetland area?
I'm sure, yes.
As part of that, if that, if that might be a, and then we can include that in the appendancy that we have, you know, written correspondence from the Army Corps of Engineer and the DEC on their understanding of where those wetland limits are.
Would that be okay, Kelly? Call from Kelly.
Okay, so I revised that section, which is the first red line section under C1 on page seven. Respondence from the US Army Corps of Engineers and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation will be provided as attachments to the DEIS. Yeah, if necessary, I feel they got that, regarding each entity's understanding of their wetland, their foundation and any associated. I just talked through that with you, I hope we're all.
Yeah.
Thank you. So then with respect to Section 3G1, which is visual resources and community character, in the scope, we're directed to inventory all aesthetic resources within five miles of the project site. That's, that's a really wide radius and we don't think based upon the location and the size of this project, a four-story hotel, that there's really any potential that there could be any impacts, aesthetic or otherwise, from this project anywhere near five miles. So we were wondering if, if that radius could be condensed with respect to the noise section of the scoping document. It was 1,500 feet, so we were asking if it could be made to align with that. I understand that five miles is the radius that's used in the full EAF Part 1, but just given all of the different sources that we're directed to go through looking for these aesthetic resources, I don't know that it's necessarily going to be a productive, produce productive information to provide a list of all of these resources that are within five miles.
You said that the third reason five miles is there is these persons in the FAIS Part 2, but also it's consistent with the scope, the final scope, we're not going to create a name on the parcel.
Right.
You asked for five miles. But to the applicant, it's meant that that DEIS has just been submitted, so a lot of information.
There is a lot in that. 756 pages worth.
Well, sorry.
I did.
But that was, that was the basis.
Yeah, that we're going to keep it consistent, I mean they are right next to each other.
It's your call if you want to keep it or.
I believe you have a partial actually, I keep it consistent.
Consistency?
Yeah.
Okay. Consistency it is.
Understood. And then the next one is with regard to what's been identified as the publicly accessible vantage points, and I suspect I'm going to get the same answer on this one too. They, has been identified as the Route 32 corridor, Route 6 corridor, Turner Road and Woodbury Commons. We were, we were just trying to get some clarification as to what the potential impacts are to the Route 32, Route 6 corridor and Woodbury Commons, given the commercial nature of, of the existing uses in that location. Because we're being asked to basically find all the vantage points that are where the property would be visible and assess what the impacts would be, but just given the nature of those uses, we were, we were just seeing if that could be fine-tuned a little bit.
It does, but I mean, I think it's six, I think it's like six vantage points.
Yeah, it's, she's right, it's the same thing from the name of the parcel. Those, when you evaluated that name of the parcel and you said these areas, I don't remember specifically what, but.
Just, just to add to that point, and I know, you know, the, the scoping document does identify those vantage points. A lot of times those are picked as, you know, publicly accessible areas. The DEC's policy on assessing and mitigating visual impacts discusses, quote, "The visual policies intended to address places or locations that are accessible to the public at large" as opposed to places that are, have individual or private importance only. So we feel like those locations are appropriate.
Yes, so the next one is in 3G2, which is visual resources and community character, but it's potential impacts and it indicates a discussion of the ridge preservation requirements that are part of the hotel overlay and based upon the location of the property and the topography, we don't believe that the bridge preservation regulations would apply to this project.
We'll agree with you, you're at like 515 feet, you got to win on that one.
Okay.
So I'll go through and I think it's.
I think, I think there's two references in that, in that section three, but yes, that would be great. Thank you.
And I average the height, I know it's a little lower in some spots and a little higher in other spots. But you're under the 600-foot threshold.
She's like, I'll take it and win.
With respect to traffic and transportation, there's a requirement to provide a simulation using the software to create the, the traffic counts and then present that at the public hearing on the DEIS. And we just, we weren't sure if that was necessary based upon the fact that we are going to be doing a traffic study that will include all of that information.
Phil? So that's for consistency with what was required of the adjacent hotel. I would suggest that your traffic engineer coordinate with them, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's, it's, you know.
Is that a table or is that?
No, no, it's an actual simulation that can be presented to show how traffic would flow and it's, it's basically an output of the analysis that they're already doing. So it's, it's not anything out of the ordinary in terms of.
Basically it takes 300 pages of text and puts it in a cool little video.
Yes. And, and just to add to that, again, you know, the DEIS has been submitted, I was just going to, you know, add to the comments that we already had, just make sure your traffic engineer coordinates for consistency with the other traffic engineer. I think up to this point, they had coordinated, but just, you know.
Is the applicant aware of the, the scoping of that simulation, meaning peak hours, weekends, holidays, and are we adding in the other traffic from the other proposed hotels?
From other developments.
And the Woodbury Commons?
Correct.
Okay, so.
The, the scope requires them to include other projects too, Woodbury Common, and, and it's up to their engineer to contact us to make sure they've included everything that's in front of the board, because there are a few others too. And in terms of the simulation, the time periods that they're analyzing, you know, weekend peaks, et cetera, that would be included as part of the simulation presentation.
Okay, thanks.
Phil, do holiday weekends factor into that at all?
Yes, so, so there's historical data on holiday weekends and they can make an adjustment to their model to demonstrate that. So you'd have your typical conditions weekday, typical conditions weekend, and then.
Yeah, like we're going to see during the holidays, between the traffic and everything else.
Yes.
How's that add to it?
And, and that's basically just an adjustment factor that they can apply to the model, so.
Fair enough.
If they have any questions, their consultant can contact us.
DOT said no, and then they would reevaluate it.
Okay.
What was that? The traffic, the DOT said no.
Said no, right?
At this point, they did, but they may change their mind.
Yeah. I mean, do they actually see these simulation model, especially 5 o'clock at night when it's backed up?
So, so once they do their synchro model, it, there's a simulation module that comes from that?
Yeah.
DOT can view that. We have requested in the past for DOT to come down in person during those time periods.
Okay, good.
Up to this point, they haven't.
Okay.
But we have requested and once they get these documents, they may, as part of their review, make that visit and we'll petition them again.
Okay, thanks.
And their position on traffic signal was that they wanted to take the wait and see. So I think once they get this document, they may change their position, but that's yet to be determined. Thank you.
And I, I just want to say, I do apologize for these issues to the extent that they're redundant with the Homewood Suites scoping document. We did try to find that for this, specifically this reason, but unfortunately, we weren't able to, so we were looking at the draft before these changes were made, so I do apologize.
And I'll send them the final one. Go ahead.
So then with respect to noise, I guess we're just trying to get a little bit of clarification as to the, the degree of the review that we're expected to do. We completely understand having to look at noise in the, the short-term construction context with respect to the actual use of the property as a hotel. It is in the hotel overlay district where, you know, it was anticipated this type of use would be, but we're certainly happy to provide narratives to address the reasons why we don't think noise will be an issue as provided in the DEIS, but have it be more of qualitative analysis as opposed to quantitative with like specific studies. And so it wasn't, it just wasn't really clear whether, whether we're supposed to be doing specific studies or if we could just address these issues in a narrative format.
I think we did.
Like certainly we can discuss, you know, the existing conditions, distance, topography, vegetation, noise source, all, all of those items with respect to the use of the property and with construction. It's more just if there's, if, just making sure that we're not expected to go beyond that.
I think all the noise is, is around construction.
Yeah, I think she's asking if they have to, you know, put out, and I could be wrong, the noise meters.
Yeah, receptors.
The receptors to actually measure. The receptors to actually measure, you know, what is the ambient noise right now and what will the impacts be from construction. Obviously, they are gonna have to... At least, I think the narrative is very much appropriate for those and to say what the expected, you know, decibel level is for each of those. But how does that respond to what's already there, I think makes sense. It is a study or exercise that this board will want to know, especially with homes that are somewhat nearby and backing up with trucks and with earth moving activities. And then it does act like any weeknight parties or events, they're gonna have those. That should be looked into, too. Is there gonna be anything outdoors? Is there gonna be any sound-producing equipment? Which, by the way, is prohibited under codes, so the answer should be no.
And we do intend to address all of those issues.
Yeah, I guess it's really how they're gonna comply with the village noise orders is now would be the narrative, right? What's gonna produce noise? How do they contend to...
And then if, when they're going into that and when they're like delving further into it, there comes to a point where there does need to be some additional noise information, that's also something that you could have as a substantive comment to be addressed in the FEIS, but you may not know that right now.
Right.
You may need to see what's provided back first.
So then we...
Noise is my specialty, so I will turn you over to Dave to do that.
I guess my first question would be, for Homewood Suites, did we request them install sound receptors and do that as part of their noise analysis?
They didn't specifically require it. Their scope was pretty much identical for noise as this is.
Okay, we haven't had a chance yet to look at the...
I have not even cracked the cover.
Well, I mean, also to your attorney's point, there will be opportunity for public comment on the DEIS. And then, to the extent the board or your consultants or members of the public may feel that more detailed information is needed, we could... We can always address that comment as part of the FEIS process.
I think we leave it as a narrative for now, and then we'll see. See what the narrative comes out.
It would be construction noise.
Yeah. Unless they're gonna have mariachi bands on weeknights. Any plans for mariachi bands?
The big thing, as you said, you're addressing...
Yes.
Is, once the hotel is established, any kind of outdoor party, breakaway, that. We will be addressing that, correct?
Of course, but that is not anticipated as far as I'm aware right now.
Okay.
And then my last comment, almost done, was a general comment that was throughout a couple of places in the scope, and it was to identify the party responsible to implement or finance each mitigation measure. It seems a little premature for us right now to be able to make that determination. Obviously, if at the end of the finding statement, this board makes determinations that certain mitigation measures are required as part of the project in order for it to be able to go forward, they'll have to be implemented. And then at that point, the project sponsor, developer, owner, whoever's, you know, taking charge, will have to implement that in whatever business manner they see fit. But I just don't know if we're gonna be able to accurately provide that information at this point in the process.
And I think part of that went to... I'm gonna give an example, because everybody knows how great my examples are, so keep that in mind. But for example, if there was a traffic improvement, I think the thought was, is this going to be like a fair share? Are they gonna pay which part? Or what time does this need to come into play? But if it's something that is a mitigation measure that's obviously on the applicant's property, like the solar that you mentioned earlier, and mitigate solar, the response here is gonna be, well, it's our project, it's on our property, we're gonna be constructing it, it's our cost. So if there comes something in this document where they can't say who's gonna do that, then they should say right now, you know, we don't know if that's gonna be the responsibility of the project sponsor or if it's a DOT improvement that the DOT is not gonna pay for.
And the same with, like, if it was like a water or sewer upgrade that was needed, right? Who's gonna pay for...
Yeah.
Are they gonna expect the village to pay for it, the developer to pay for it, or...
Right. That's a great example. If a new well needs to be drilled for this project, how is that gonna be financed? Something like that. So it's in the more broad scheme, but for the most part, almost all of them are gonna be on-site for the developer, but it's something that should be in there. If they don't know, they can say they don't know.
Like, just for instance, the section where I actually first noticed it and then I went back through it again was in noise. And I have to imagine that that's something that would be exclusive to the applicant or the developer.
That one could be, but sanitary, water, utilities?
Of course. In other sections, I understand what's being... But it was just... That was where it initially jumped out at me. And so I wasn't thinking of it on that broad of a scope where it may bring in municipal services, it may bring in DOT, something like that, because that seemed like something that was... That would be very specific to the property and to the project.
Yeah, I think if it's noise, it would be the developer.
Right.
If, for example, they say what would really help the noise is planting these trees along 32, and the DOT says that's great, then again, who's paying for that? It would be off their prop, then they would say, okay, we're paying for that. Or if it's just a retaining wall on their property, they would say, we're paying for that.
So you just mean we, as in the applicant. It doesn't need to be more specific than that?
I don't need to know whose checkbook is...
Okay, that was what I was...
We need routing numbers, account numbers, Bitcoin. What are you gonna use to pay for it?
That was why... I appreciate that clarification. Okay, so then I withdraw my comment.
I don't need to know who's finding the project. I just want to be sure.
We need a prospectus. We need to see the last 10 years of financials. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That was it, so, end on a light.
She withdrew. I saw the email, but I didn't know whether there was anything else left in it.
It's a good point, because if it came to you and you were expecting to know that it was coming out of Dave's personal checkbook, you may want to know that. It's not.
Dave wants to know that. I didn't bring my check.
It's more general than that.
I have a better question. Who still uses a checkbook? Okay. I'll take my comment back then. I... You know what? I do have just a couple more, I guess, comments or questions on the water supply and sanitary sewer wastewater management. Sean? Hey, at least I got your name right three times in a row. Much better than I do with Jim, so...
Home run. One for one, so...
He's gonna be so disappointed.
He's gonna be very disappointed when he gets back from vacation. Under Homeland Suites, we were, I guess, very pointed in the questions we asked on both water and sanator... Sanitary. Wow, hard for me to say. Here, we're kind of broad. I think what we have in Avalon leaves a lot up to interpretation, where under Homewood, we were very, you know, discuss the ability of the current water system to meet project water demand with the consideration of allocated capacity of other approved and unbuilt developments. Discuss any and necessary upgrades to the village water system to meet these needs. And in here, we kind of like identify existing water infrastructure in the vicinity of the project site and applicable water district, and describe existing supply, demand, and capacity as well as major system components. I feel like we're very broad in what needs to be taken into account. And the reason I bring it up, because if anybody's not aware, Woodbury is under Water Moratorium. They are bringing on additional capacity, but that is some time away. We're also very close on sewer capacity, what we have left with Orange County Sewer District. So given this project, the comments that was before us, Homewood Suites, and the 47 other applications that are before this board right now, I think there's a lot that has to be taken into account on... Eventually, we're gonna hit a tipping point. Well, actually, we hit a tipping point. It's just how far over the tipping point are we at this point?
Yeah, and I do think it's a good comment. I know the applicant hasn't had a chance to see the scoping document that Homewood Suites had. But essentially, as Chris described, it just provides a higher level of accuracy to the things we're gonna be expecting in this DEIS. And I think it'll avoid some back and forth potentially between ourselves and the applicant on some of those comments and the things that we're looking for in order for us to properly understand the sewer and water impacts of the project. So I agree with your point, Chris. I know the applicant hasn't had a chance to look at these revisions, but I think generally, it's the same intent, just with more detail.
So are you talking about the five bullet points on page 20 of their, of the Homewood Suites scope?
Talking about both. There's two sections that...
I have it under eight, infrastructure utilities.
Potential impacts.
23.
Existing conditions. There's bullet points in both areas that he's referencing.
Want me to re-mail them to you?
Yeah, so it would be 8A and then 8B from the scoping document.
What he said, sweet.
So would the attention be just to copy and paste what's in the Homewood Suites scope?
Yeah, it's to... Because to take the... I'm gonna make up a word. Broad... Broadcinity, the wideness of what's in Avalon and bring it online with what we did with...
You know, I don't necessarily object to that for the reasons that were mentioned, because, you know, the more direction we have now, the more likely we are to be able to get it right on the first try, you know?
I think once you see these, you'll understand why I'm pointing back to these, because they're much more narrow within the broad. And it's just like everybody's saying, to avoid this back and forth when you come back. Oh, can you look at this, or you didn't do this, or we still need you to look at that?
And we understand being consistent between the two, so...
There's sewer and water in 8A and then sewer and...
I think that would be fine without having an opportunity to see it. I think, you know, given the rationale and the objective, I think we would consent to that.
We took the whole thing about having to find unicorns and pink elephants out. You don't have to worry about looking for that stuff.
Okay, so I'll do that for the sewer and the water.
Yeah.
Okay. And I will email that Homewood Suites personally tomorrow. Actually, I'll do it right now.
Anything else we want to beat up? I'm good. You're good. So you think, Kelly, we can adopt it with the revisions we discussed tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the only... I made all of the changes this evening, except I'll go through the bridge preservation so there's no additional references. And then I'll replace 8A and 8B for water and sewer.
Okay.
That's it.
Any other feedback for anybody else? No? So I will offer a motion to accept the scoping document with modifications discussed tonight. Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Well, see you.
Board, consultants, thank you.
See you when you're done. Well, it was a year for the other one, so... All right, last but certainly not least, Indoctrinary Local Law Number 3 of 2024. Review referral by the Village Board of Trustees of Indoctrinary Local Law 3 of 2024 entitled "A Local Law Amending the Zoning Map of the Village of Woodbury."
Thank you.
So let me just open it up on my laptop before I start talking. Okay, so this is a local law that I referred to from the Board of Trustees, and it's in connection with the Highland Mills Center application. Since it was presented to the Board of Trustees, I did have additional communications with their representatives, George Lithgow and Joe Fow. So there have been several changes to this, which more reflects the specific acreage that's going to be proposed in each zoning district. Because if you remember, it's a, you know, a pretty complicated application with lot lines changing, and then this going here and changing to that, and this going there to change into that. So the biggest typo was that I called it introductory local law number 6, and it's number 3, so...
Close enough.
Fixed.
6 is divisible by 3.
You know, that's where I was... That's where I was at. So I think I did send the board the red line changes that I was gonna be suggesting, and I didn't know if you guys had any additional comments or modifications, and I'll pass it over.
Can we just say it doesn't make sense where it's going, because there's nothing for the seniors to walk to?
So yes, we did review Attorney Norton's red line memo. We did also pick up on that local law typo. Other than that, the only thing I wanted to point out to the board, and this is something Natalie has mentioned in previous memos on this local law, was that, you know, the village board at the time of the adoption of the zoning map amendment can limit or designate development of the units to either rental units or individual for-sale units, or some combination of both. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that point. Other than that, we didn't have any comments on the red line version.
Can you repeat that with the residential and the rental?
Yes, so the village board, at the time of the adoption of the zoning map amendment, may limit or designate development as A, senior rental projects, or B, for-sale individually-owned units, or some combination of both. So some combination of rental and for-sale.
Any project that goes up in these new zoning areas, they have the right to choose whether it be rental or for sale?
Well, the board can designate one or the other if they wish to.
The village board can.
Yeah, I was saying, for the actual zoning district or for the project itself in that zoning district?
It would be for this one zoning district, right?
It would be for this zoning district, which right now is proposing two buildings. So they could say, you know, with no more than 12 units as for sale, the rest have to be rented. Whatever it is. Again, that was a dramatic example. It is not too big of an example.
Okay. That's all of these units in this senior housing are gonna be rentals?
Well, that's what they're presenting the project as. But what they're saying is that when the village board chooses to adopt the local law, part of the local law could be that X percentage or X number of units have to be rental units, and X percent... And the other percentage has to be owner-occupied.
Is that wanted?
Right.
Okay.
Did I explain that well?
That was perfect. Way better than Michael Paul's unit. I should've started with you.
I mean, it's really... That's the village board. That's not...
Yeah, it's not us.
It's not us. I'll just...
Do you prefer the red line version or the original version?
The red line version.
Because it's more...
Yeah.
Clears, yes.
So what would you like the report back to the board to say?
Could we concur with the red line version?
I heard a motion in a second.
There you go. I make the motion, too.
In a second? Any questions?
You got all that?
Motion says up the red line version.
Yes.
I would view fit to work.
Yeah, I mean, the other... Really, the other feedback from us doesn't matter, because it's all in the village board, as far as what they want to do with it.
It's their determination, but I will forward H21's memo, too, as part of your report after they have that information as well as the due circumstances.
Okay. All right. Sorry, there was a motion on the floor. All in... Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, you can make the next question.
I can make the next question. Do you know further business... As far as the board, I'll offer a motion to close. Second, any questions?
Aye.